Good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Jamestown Public School Board to order. It is Monday, May 19th, 2025, 5:30 PM, and we're in the Thompson Community Room at the middle school. I'd like to welcome all those in the audience today, and thank you for coming. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jacob, would you be willing to read the school board norms?
The school board developed norms are to share and respect opinions and speak with a united voice once a decision has been reached, execute all duties of the school board in compliance with the North Dakota Century Code, properly prepare for meetings, commit to assessing board effectiveness, and ensure high-quality governance for all stakeholders.
Thank you, Jacob. We have no public communication. Are there any conflicts of interest to declare? Any conflicts of interest? Any conflicts of interest? If not, moving on to our consent agenda. Would the board like anything removed or have anything clarified in the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion? Motion by Melissa, second by Steve. We have a motion, a second for approval of the consent agenda. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion approved. Moving into our regular meeting, we have some recognition this evening, and just want to note that these individuals were also recognized in the superintendent's report spotlight in previous meetings, but we also want to bring them forward and get some pictures. So we have a teacher recognition and then the food service department. And as your name is called and your recognition is read, just please join me over here. I have a certificate for you, then we will come up here and get some photos. And family, feel free to come up close and take photos right up in the middle. Starting with Jason, you want to start us off?
Mrs. Tiffany Dooley, teacher at Jamestown Middle School, was named 2025 Middle Level Student Council Advisor of the Year. Tanya Hunsker, State Director of the North Dakota Honor Society and Student Council, stated, "The award honors Mrs. Dooley's exceptional commitment to student leadership, her dedication to service, and the meaningful impact she has on her school community." Congratulations and thank you.
The North Dakota School Nutrition Association named two staff for the state awards. Congratulations to Lori Podol, Kitchen Assistant at Jamestown High School, was named Employee of the Year, and Melissa Doctor, Cook Manager at Jamestown High School, was named Manager of the Year.
Moving on our agenda, under Correspondence, we have a couple of thank you cards, one from Julie Skenberg and the family of Richard Muslin for their remembrance. Under Reports, we have Student Council Reports. Oh, awesome.
Hi, I'm Hattie McDonald. I'm the current Executive Board President of Student Council at JHS, and the only item I have a report on is our newly-elected Executive Board President. She's unable to make it today due to soccer, but it is Belle Schustrom. As for Student Council, we have not had any recent activities to report on. Thank you for a great school year, and do you have any questions?
Thank you for that update. Any questions from the board? We appreciate the report, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have the Food Service Report. Cindy?
Just a quick update, we are for the second year in a row doing the Summer Meals Program. We have approximately 180 kids signed up already, and Jackie Russell will be heading that again this year, and our locations will be at Roosevelt, Washington, Lincoln, and Louis L'Amour. The Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program, or FFVP, will be introduced back into the schools this upcoming school year. Program updates and notable changes, North Dakota is expanding the free and reduced meal price eligibility in the 200% poverty level. We're in compliance with the state policy, which is the anti-lunch-shaming bill. Program priorities looking ahead is to continue to focus on fruits, vegetables, whole grains, balanced nutrition. The nutrition team will continue to introduce more scratch cooking, and we're going to start introducing that at breakfast as well. Reducing added sugars, particularly in the school breakfast. Menu flexibility, including plant-based, culturally-inclusive, and locally-sourced meals. Jackie, Russell, and Lori Podol have lots at the community garden this year that they will be growing fruits and vegetables, and we will be implementing them in our fruit and veggie bars. Our challenges still remain, the food and labor costs, sufficient staffing to be able to introduce those scratch cooking programs, and understanding program changes as they happen. As you know, we've been recognized both state and nationally. We look forward to going to Vegas in October to receive our two national awards we just got, so that is all I have. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions from the board? I was just asking if there's any questions, and Jason, go ahead.
Thank you, and thank your entire staff for everything they do every day. The Summer Meals Program, you said 180 for this coming summer?
So far, there's 180 kids signed up.
And is that up, down? Has that number remained relatively consistent?
It's a lot up from when we started this last year at this time. It's still people sign up when they pick up meals. We had people signing up all the way until we ended it, so yeah.
What were we serving last year?
We served over 20,000 meals last year. Yeah, breakfast and lunch. Yep.
Anything else from the board?
Thank you all for continuing to support us and my staff too, because we're doing amazing, they're doing amazing, so I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate the dedication. Thank you so much. We had a Finance Committee meeting recently, and Erin, would you want to just provide the board an update from that?
Yes, we met last week and discussed some major topics. One was the support staff pay and a recommendation that we were put forth on that. If you recall, last year, we did make a correction to get us to be more competitive with our tough-to-fill positions. We went through an analysis and showed that we had some gaps, and so last year, we did fill some of those gaps, but we want to make sure we continue to be competitive, and that's why the recommendation that we selected is putting in front of us, that we feel that that gets us in a good position for filling those positions or maintaining those positions. We also looked at the overall budget for actually the next two years on projections based on the JPS latest offer for negotiations. Just a couple of highlights there, we do have a slight deficit that would be realized as a part of that for this year, but there's a much larger deficit that results for the following year. So that led to some discussion. And just to look at some more analysis on what we're doing from a curriculum in terms of core versus, what do we call it? Enrichment, yeah. So just kind of, what are our requirements? What do we need to do to meet our minimum set of requirements? What do we need to do to fulfill our goals? And what other items are affecting operationally, affecting our budget? So we just asked the administration to kind of break that down so that when we get to a point of, you know, having to have some tough discussions, however this referendum turns out, however negotiations turn out, we need to have some levers we can pull to, if we need to make some adjustments to that and affect that deficit. So there's some homework on the table there for us to consider. And also note that there is, within that budget, there's, you know, we did with the closure of Washington, there are some operational savings, but there's also some significant changes on the revenue side as well that is impacting us operationally, so. All of that is in that presentation that was made available for that finance retreat. Last item is a temporary position, so we talked about adding that to a recommendation to fill a position to deal with the Washington assets, how we want to distribute them, how we want to dispose of them, whatever that looks like, having somebody dedicated to that as a temporary position, so we know what we have and know what we want to do with it from an organized standpoint, so. And I guess that was pretty much it, so any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Erin. Okay, all right. Moving on, Strategic Plan Progress Monitoring. Mr. Gaylor.
All right. Good evening, and thank you, Dr. Luck, for inviting me to share, there's two progress monitorings, and so we'll stop after each one, be able to answer any questions you might have. The first one is really in that Leadership for Learning focus area, which you've heard quite a bit about this year, but really is all about how we're continuously improving, and it's about the quality of instruction as well as engagement with our community in Leadership for Learning. The specific goal that we're monitoring today would be looking at our guaranteed and viable curriculum, and I'll take some time to explain that, as well as to provide an update on the status of the second part of that, which is that we're reporting proficiency on priority academic standards in 100% of courses by 2026. Take some explanation to talk about guaranteed and viable curriculum. Guaranteed means that we've got a set list that no matter what, if you're in kindergarten in Roosevelt, or if you're in kindergarten in Washington, that those students have a guaranteed set of curriculum that we are working to this level of depth that we want to monitor proficiency, or if you're taking ninth or ninth-grade physical science from one teacher versus another, that that's the same set of priorities, that we've got actual data systems behind that to be able to monitor that, and that we have a PLC process. A couple of board meetings ago, we talked about intervention and enrichment. If we have a guaranteed curriculum, we want to make sure that we've got resources to support kids that are coming in already knowing those priorities, and resources to support those who don't know them yet. So that's where that PLC process supports with the guaranteed part of our curriculum. This is not the entirety of our curriculum, but it is that set of priorities that we've got. Viable means that our students can learn that within a year, and that our staff have the resources to support kids, resources in terms of time, resources in terms of curriculum, but that we've also sufficiently prioritized to say, this set of essential skills or priorities are viable within a school year for students to learn that. So we've taken some different action steps at each level to make some progress towards this goal. At the elementary, we've actually been implementing standards-based learning this year for math, ELA, music, PE, and health, and in the future, we'll be implementing more specifically with science and social studies, scales, and cybersecurity. So the status report for elementary is really that we're at about 60% of those courses that are reporting proficiency, and 100% of grade levels, students have experienced that and staff have experienced that across the elementary. When it comes to what those reports might look like and some of their usefulness, I included just a quick snip of a report that we can pull directly from Empower. We can do similar things with Power School when the middle school and high school start to implement there. But basically, we've got our list of standards here, and this was not at the end of the year. This was prior to the end of the year, so I would expect some of these percentages of students proficient would change, but it really gives you a quick look at which areas have students shown proficiency. And that's useful from a curricular decision standpoint. It's also useful from that guaranteed and viable lens to say, okay, if there's only 28% of our students that are mastering classifying 2D figures, then why is that? Should that continue to be a priority, or are we allocating resources? Do we have sufficient coverage for that standard within our curriculum? Prior to being able to take the data and look at it this way, that may have gone unknown or unnoticed or hidden within the series of assessments and grades. Being that much more scientific about collecting that information and having that on display is going to be a useful tool from a guaranteed and viable curriculum standpoint. It's also really useful, for example, for the fifth-grade teachers to know that we're ending the year with 28% proficient in this area, but we've got 82% proficiency in multiplying fractions. So for them to plan their review to start the year, or to plan their sequence or curriculum, that's a pretty essential set of data, pretty important set of data. Also, within Empower Platform, this kind of shows viability vertically across our curriculum, so we're able to just visually see how standards stack on top of each other and be able to determine. Each of these colors represent a different grade level, where those standards and strands connect, and our coaches and SBL leads did a lot of work to make sure that that vertical articulation was there at the elementary as well. So those are a couple of the progress steps that we've made at the elementary level. JMS has also been working hard on a report card. They've done some professional learning this year on assessment practices. They came together as a staff and talked about grading principles to increase the confidence and accuracy in how we're presenting this proficiency data, and then teachers have been piloting, gathering that data in their courses. So a conservative estimate would be around 10% of our priority standards they've practiced with that at the middle school. High school is similar, still building in that process, and they've done their prioritization. They've built a lot of the scales necessary to measure proficiency. They're working on unit planning for next year and building those assessments. In our mathematics, a couple of courses did pilot the use of a resource called NAVI, which is a state-provided resource that gives by-student-by-standard-level data, and they found that to be a pretty promising resource. I think that we'll see some expansion into other grade levels and courses for that next year. The state's goal is ultimately to be able to provide that resource for every state standard and course and subject area, but that will take them time to build that out as well. So the high school is currently piloting that, but doesn't have any courses that are explicitly listing proficiency, so we didn't have any progress in terms of percentage, but a lot of progress in terms of the background work to reach that goal. So we are on target with this goal, even though it seems 2026 is coming upon us fairly quickly. Ultimately, this will give us better data and helps us focus on that guaranteed and viable curriculum. The technology systems that are required to support this and to make this logistically possible for staff continue to evolve, and I think that that's going to help us with more effective use of that data. And we feel that this is the most relevant data for classroom instructional decisions. Each set of data, whether we're talking later in July about our FastBridge and STAR data, which is nationally-normed, or we're talking in the fall when we get our state assessment results back, each of those are for a different lens. This level of data is really the most useful to make those instructional decisions, as well as some of the curricular decisions that we need to make. So next steps, just keep refining our tracking systems, increase our confidence and accuracy within our assessments, find which tech tools can help support that by-student-by-standard data, continue to support the PLC process so that we're using that data to inform our instruction, and then some further analysis, particularly at the elementary level, just to see, what have we learned from this? How do we want to make sure that we're collecting that data more consistently or accurately in the future? And also, what have we learned from our curricular performance to make decisions for next year? With that, I'd stand for any questions on Area 2, Goal 1.
Any questions from the board? Erin?
Just curious, since we, this is kind of our first data point on the standard-based learning of the elementary school, have you gotten any anecdotal feedback at all on what that looks like and how receptive or non-receptive folks are, both from a, I don't know, from a teacher standpoint, parent standpoint?
So we had good engagement with parents the middle of the year when we started to roll out our reports. I think that we haven't had as much engagement with the actual Empower Platform as what we would like. We're told by the vendor that our number of parent logins are about on par or on course, but we want to see a little bit more engagement with that next year, and so we need to do some more intentional communication about that data to get that feedback from parents. Our educators are really starting to think about the assessments and the pacing as they're looking towards next year, and have learned a lot through that initial implementation, and I think that we're going to be that much more confident coming into the fall with what we want that to look like. Each of those SBL leads put an additional five, six days in this year, refining as they were going, and then they've been meeting as a district-wide group every other week to try to keep pace. I'd say that we're going to make more progress in SBL specifically next year because we have some of the curricular questions answered. That was a bigger lift than maybe what I expected. I'm sure our elementary teachers knew that it would be a big lift to implement a new reading curriculum that's aligned with Science of Reading, but that took a lot of the planning efforts of those teams, and so we've got a real focus next year on getting more into the data, particularly week-to-week within those PLCs, and how do our instructional coaches support our staff to analyze the data and make instructional decisions more on the by-student-by-standard level in a week-to-week fashion? So I expect we're going to come up with more questions next year as we get into that level of data, but we feel really good about collecting it this year, understanding how that process works. I haven't reached out recently to our ELT on that, but we can definitely get some more feedback from them.
And what was the timing with the implementation at the middle school level then?
So the middle school is planning to roll out next fall. We've had just one parent forum so far this spring, and need to, you know, get on some more communication there as well. They have been working on their unit planning, and most piloted, as I understood from Natalie the other day, most piloted a unit this spring. I think that the middle school team concept, as well as the middle school ability to have common preps within the content areas for the most part, has kind of helped them really accelerate that as well. Versus the elementary, a lot of that was our SBL leads that got pulled out and then got feedback from their peers in the Wednesday meetings the year before. The middle school's been able to make really good progress in those common planning times they have.
Any other questions from the board? Jason?
When the results, or let's say we identify a pain point, a lower competency area, either in a building or grade level or what have you, is it then in the, I liked what you said about how then maybe next fall, that's addressed a little more heavily, you know, in the review of the previous year. So is that in the instructional coaches' wheelhouse then to make those alignments with the buildings and staff, or is that a building-level administrator duty?
If it's a particular challenge in a building, they have building PLCs. Mrs. Anderson, Mr. Meisner, we're just working today on trying to align for next year the Louis L'Amour schedule with Roosevelt's schedule, for example. to get that feedback from parents. Our educators are really starting to think about the assessments and the pacing and as they're looking towards next year. And have learned a lot through that initial implementation. And I think that we're going to be that much more confident coming into the fall with what we want that to look like. Each of those SBL leads put an additional five, six days in this year, refining as they were going. And then they've been meeting as a district-wide group every other week to try to keep pace. I'd say that we're going to make more progress in SBL specifically next year because we have some of the curricular questions answered. That was a bigger lift than maybe what I expected. I'm sure our elementary teachers knew that it would be a big lift to implement a new reading curriculum that's aligned with science of reading. But that took a lot of the planning efforts of those teams. And so we've got a real focus next year on getting more into the data, particularly week-to-week within those PLCs. And how do our instructional coaches support our staff to analyze the data and make instructional decisions more on the by-student-by-standard level in a week-to-week fashion? So, I expect we're going to come up with more questions next year as we get into that level of data. But we feel really good about collecting it this year, understanding how that process works. I haven't reached out recently to our ELT on that, but we can definitely get some more feedback from them.
What was the timing with the implementation at the middle school level then?
So the middle school is planning to roll out next fall. We've had just one parent forum so far this spring and need to, you know, get on some more communication there as well. They have been working on their unit planning. And most piloted, as I understood from Natalie the other day, most piloted a unit this spring. I think that the middle school team concept, as well as the middle school ability to have common preps within the content areas for the most part, has kind of helped them really accelerate that as well. Versus the elementary, a lot of that was our SBL leads that got pulled out and then got feedback from their peers in the Wednesday meetings the year before. The middle school's been able to make really good progress in those common planning times they have.
Any other questions from the, Jason?
When the, when the results, or let's say we identify a pain point, a lower competency area, either in a building or grade level or what have you. Is it then in the, I liked what you said about how then maybe next fall that's addressed a little more heavily, you know, in the review of the previous year. So is that in the instructional coaches' wheelhouse then? To make those alignments with the buildings and staff? Or is that a building-level administrator duty?
If it's a particular challenge in a building, they have building PLCs. Mrs. Anderson, Mr. Meisner, we're just working today on trying to align for next year the Louis Lamour schedule with Roosevelt's schedule, for example, so that they have a common prep time that they can discuss those types of issues and solve them at the building level. And those, we have amazing professionals, no doubt about it. And that's really where that needs to live. It's not administrative function. But when we look at overall on the curriculum and on the district scale for a grade level, for example, our administrators and coaches would be present at those meetings too. Did I answer that fully? Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. If not, Mr. Gaylor, as long as you're there, would you mind moving into educational competency, board education, JVCTC?
I have one more.
Oh, you have one more? Oh, sorry. Sorry, sorry. Okay.
I'll make this one shorter.
Okay.
Maybe. All right. Okay, so growth and learning, strategic focus four, that we impact learning and growth daily and that we prepare all students for future success, that we have balanced data and evidence to monitor that growth of knowledge and skills is that overall focus area. This was a strategic goal that was related to our platform. For the most part, is where the data came from, which is called eye observation. And that platform is what we use for our evaluation data. And so we had a goal to have 2,000 teacher observations and 6,000 elements of actionable feedback over the course of this year. Element ratings, which are on a continuum from not using all the way up to innovating, to have those ratings with ninety percent of them or more in that applying or innovating in all four domains of the teacher evaluation. And then, two-year cohort models, we were looking at, do our teachers that are coming back year to year, are they demonstrating annual growth in those areas? So it took a little bit of analysis. The first one was fairly easy. This was something that we progress monitored. Dr. Leck had it on the agenda each month, and I just simply updated that at our admin meetings, our progress towards that 2,000 teacher observations. The element ratings, we had to wait until April 15th when evaluations are finalized to be able to analyze that data. In terms of status report, we did not meet our goal for 2,000 teacher observations, coming up just shy of seventy percent of that goal and around seventy percent of the element score goal as well. When it comes to element ratings with ninety percent or more in applying and innovating, the domain one average, so domain one is the most, the one that's most focused on instruction, whereas domain two is focused on planning and preparing, and domain three on reflection in teaching, and domain four is on professional practices. Overall, in 2024, we had a ninety-six point six percent of our element ratings were applying and innovating. And in 2025, that's ninety-five point five percent. Two-year cohort models, so the best way to look at this was to look at individual practices and to determine which areas did we demonstrate growth in. So we did see some decline in a couple of areas. Level one teachers would be teachers within their first three years of the district. And so, we only compared teachers that were here last year and returned this year then in those level ones. So, kind of a narrow group when you're looking at level one. Establishing classroom routines and organizing the layout of the classroom were the areas of decline. In level two teachers, the areas of decline in terms of ratings was engaging students with complex tasks, providing resources for cognitive complex tasks, and then celebrating success. On the flip side, a lot of annual growth in level one and in level two. You can see those listed out there. And a lot of common things like providing rigorous learning goals and performance scales. We saw an increase in performance in that, and that's likely due in response to our focus within professional learning and standards-based learning. Okay. So, we need to increase that observation frequency in order to be able to meet that goal. We need some additional, I think, training and support to increase the accuracy and confidence in our observation data. When we look at high percentages of applying and innovating scores, we have, the group that supports us in eye observation also is able to do some of that data analysis. And it does indicate really strong instructional quality. And that instructional quality maintains, is strong year to year. One of the questions from that group that looks at that data and analyzes was just that if we're seeing that amount of scores and innovating and applying, do we have a strong grasp of the tool as a growth tool? And that's not to say that we don't have great teachers, but the tool is designed for people to reach a score of developing. And just the word "developing," I think, is something that we're less comfortable with. So, in that continuum, the goal is developing, and we have people exceeding that. And their question was, is that an accurate look, picture of all of our instructional staff? Or are we being too generous with the scoring, essentially? And I think that that was good discussion with our administrative team when they presented that data. I think that one of the things that we need to get back to administratively is looking at video examples. So not necessarily our staff, but they have a plethora of videos and then doing more, like the teachers are doing, scoring camps essentially, looking at that same evidence and doing ratings together and then discussing as professionals, you know, why is this rating versus that rating? I think that's going to give us more accuracy and confidence as well as the training. So, we are, as a district, moving towards the focused model within Marzano as well, which, just like we're asking teachers to prioritize within their content to make guaranteed and viable curriculum, that's the same process we're going to do as a district with our instructional model. And it really gets to this idea of deliberate practice, that we're practicing a set of focused skills with feedback and coaching and feedback administratively that's consistent as well. That model, based on the same model that was adopted in, I think, 2014 here, but much condensed and refined and reflective of the standards-based process. You can see the comparison from four domains to three, from sixty-plus elements to twenty-three streamlined elements, a focus on what is the teacher doing in the classroom in the previous model, to observing more, how are the students reacting? Or what are the outcomes the students are having based on the teacher actions? Feedback, processes change, and standards alignment is more central to the planning portions of the focused model. We do plan to train admin, teacher leaders in that focused model. That'll happen in August, prior to the school year for teacher leaders and admin. Then we'll train teachers in that model, often on throughout the year. Jason is a member on the PD committee. That's a group that's worked a lot on personalized PD. And so, the personalized PD model that we adopted is designed to get to that deliberate practice of this set of skills so we can continue to learn that. And then, one of the things to explore administratively that I think is a powerful model to get increased administrative time into classrooms is called the Breakthrough Coach. And we'll be offering that as a training opportunity for any admin that might be interested in that next year as well. One other recommendation that, just in doing this analysis, was that that data from a strategic goal like this, I think, may be best monitored by the PD committee. And so, I put a note down for next spring to be able to at least offer that data to the PD committee to make sure we're aligning our resources with where our needs are. With that, I'd stand for any questions on Strategic Focus Four, Goal Four.
Any questions on the second part? Okay. Not, oh, Erin, go ahead.
So, as far as the number of teacher observations as a goal or metric there, I guess when we kind of laid that out, it was, I was of the opinion that it's a target, not a specific goal. And as we engage in this, that if we need to adjust that for, I think it's good to have a target, but if it's, if 2,000 isn't the right number because of resources and time and effort to do that for the benefit that we get from it, I'd be open to, you know, considering a different number for next year in that strategic area.
If I may, it was, it was a pretty aspirational number. But I think it's still achievable, but I do think setting a process to, you know, a timeline to get there, you know, maybe we jumped ahead a little too high or jumped a little too high on that. But I still think it's a reasonable goal to get to at some point. It's just whether it's, you know, I agree that we could maybe look at that number a little bit. And it was a relatively arbitrary selection. It isn't scientifically based in any way to say, this is what equates to good observation practice. It was just a number.
Right. I just want to make sure that the context is there so that if somebody looks at this and says, oh, we failed because we didn't get to this number. Well, no, that number, like you said, was aspirational and we were just kind of setting a target to see, you know.
Thank you, Erin, good points. Any other questions from the board? Okay. If not, is there a motion to accept the progress monitoring report for Strategic Focus Area Four, Goal Four? What was that? Oh, and then the other one as well. Is it, what is, what's the number for? Two, what was the first?
Two, two point one, yeah.
Is there a motion to accept both? Motion by Jamie, second by Melissa. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Now, Mr. Gaylor, as long as you're there, would you mind doing our board education, educational competency, JVCTC project update?
Yeah. Excellent. And of course, I'd invite any board members to come up to JVCTC, just arrange your time to meet with Mrs. Eckert or myself to take a look at the progress. It's nice to see dirt moving. The few major projects that we have going on currently, still a few trailing things on the childcare remodel, one of them being an HVAC thing that will get completed. The coil has been ordered and it's, they have everything else ready to be installed for that. That's going to happen in early June, as well as the fencing for the childcare playground. Otherwise, between auto collision and building trades, finishing up a few things, and Mrs. Olson and her classes working really hard at getting the equipment put together and installed, everything is really on track with that and ready to go. A ton of work, looks beautiful up there. If you want to check that out, just let us know. Culinary arts expansion was mentioned at the last board meeting. And so that's that partnership that we have with the art center. And that equipment has all been purchased and is scheduled for delivery and installation in July, as early as July, but that depends on the readiness of Jamestown Art Center as well. Our major addition up at the site, they've done some site prep. And you may recall, back in December, the original bids kind of came back out of scope for that project. And then we had to rebid that project to be in line with the budget. Last Friday, we had a visit from the state director for CTE, and he was really impressed with the plan. He was impressed at what we were able to achieve of that plan and said that that was, that he feels like we're getting a lot of bang for our buck. He said that the timing with that likely probably helped to some extent because he's seen these projects play out in other parts of the state. Their scope has been, in some cases, has been more impacted. You know, we were all impacted in some way by inflationary adjustments over the time period. But he said others had to cut significantly more. So he was impressed with the creativity that we had to be able to still get that project done. That site preparation and excavation has been done. They've also been pouring footings up there. Progress has maybe halted a little bit with some of that with the recent weather, but we're on track. We have biweekly construction meetings now with the architect and Hillrood Construction. So, pretty smooth progress there so far. No major setbacks. The crews were excited to be able to come and deliver some of that, the materials for things. And Mrs. Eckert, as well as JVCTC staff and students, just did an exceptional job in making sure that the site was ready. If you had been back there in recent years, there was a lot of things that just get accumulated over time. And they did a ton of work going through that, making sure that everything was ready on the site. We did find out as we were, as they were doing a lot of the dirt work up there, that the asphalt coming in and out of there with heavy trucks didn't necessarily stand up to all of that. And I know that we're trying to work on a solution for that. I would say that in the next month, you're going to see a visible transformation up there with the building popping up. And, you know, we're really glad about the partnerships that we have working on completing that project and just super satisfied with the results so far and the communication that we've had on this project. Those would be the major projects. We have some other equipment-related things that are on that Capital Projects grant. We have our CDL program that's also going on. There aren't any major construction processes with that, but it is, there are some significant expenditures as well as significant revenue that are related to those. We are still looking for a part-time CDL instructor, if anybody's out there that's interested in that. It would be a great opportunity to both give back, and we can support anybody through the transition to teaching to be able to support our kids with that type of opportunity. Got a little out of, out of practice there, but questions on the capital projects or construction project at CTC?
Any questions from the board? Okay. All right. And thank you, Mr. Gaylor and Heidi Eckert and all the staff and students up at the JVCTC for, it takes a lot to get these things completed and completed on time, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Before we move on to the superintendent's report, I see our new student council president, Belle Schustrom, has shown, has come after practice, right? Would you like to just come up and introduce yourself to the board? And we look forward to hearing your reports next year.
Yeah, sorry I'm late. We have practice till six. But I'm Belle Schustrom. I'm the newly-elected Student Council Executive Board President. My campaign this year was mostly about inclusion in our school, and I think that's what drew a lot of people to vote for me. I have a lot of ideas that I'm eager to share with all of you here along with building it on student council, but that's really all I have right now. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Any questions? Thank you so much for, thank you so much for coming after practice so we could meet you. And we do look forward to the progress and all your reports next year, so thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Superintendent's report, Dr. Leck.
Thank you. You have my written report. Before I get into that, I have to apologize to the board. There's, I pride myself on giving you a lot of information as, you know, with a good runway to make some decisions, and I failed you in this one. As Mr. Roberts was talking, it made me realize as I was looking through the agenda, we did not include the support staff recommendation on this agenda. And so I
not include the support staff recommendation on this agenda, and so I wanted to talk through that, like I said, that's, that's, that's my failing there, and, but we did vet and make some recommendations through the Finance Committee, a few different ways that we can deal with that, if the board feels comfortable, you could certainly direct us, you know, in the form of a motion, if you feel like you need more time to have that, you know, to, you know, act on that, we could do that at a future meeting, my concern would be, the longer we delay, the longer our support staff doesn't have that information and those letters of, of employment, and so if it's possible, if you, if, as a board, you feel comfortable making this decision, based on the Finance Committee recommendation, I would certainly appreciate that, and I'm sure that the staff would as well. If you go through, I'm projecting it here, and I did include it into your folder, so you can pull it up on your own, it's Support Staff Wage Recommendations, the, the board, the Finance Committee looked at Option Two, that ranged between a 3.4% and a 3.6% increase for those positions, and you can see the, the range of, of hourly impact there, from 53 cents to 89 cents, and then those staff, if you're familiar with our wage schedule, those that are eight years of experience or longer, they, they fall off the schedule, and so they get a, you know, in this recommendation, a 3.6, 3.6% per hour increase. The total cost impact to that, 138,000, we did look at a few different options, from a flat dollar amount to percentage dol, to percentage amounts, and this was the option that aligned most closely with what has been provided in other classifications, if you remember, we have four classifications, at least in proposals, I should say, but we have four classifications, our non-teaching professionals, teachers, administrators, and support staff. So our support staff has compared the least favorably to peers around the region, and that's why you'll see this percentage in this classification is a little bit higher than what has been proposed in other classifications thus far, that's the rationale for that, and, and the rationale for expediting if that's possible, and I don't know if there's any color, Finance Committee members that you need to add, or would like to add, or Kristy, that, you know, again, my apologies for not including this in Finance.
Can you put on the box so it's bigger there, or is it?
I'm going to take this down back just a bit.
I didn't know if you could make that whole box that could extend or-
Oh, sure.
There we go.
I gotcha.
Thank you.
So again, the thought process looking was, was to, you know, we, we have budgeted areas, we're, we're budgeted targets that we're trying to reach, and we wish that we could provide more, but that's not always the case, we, we always try to strive to do the very, very best that we can, but this was the, the option that the Finance Committee looked to.
Jason?
I know you mentioned that there's some comparison to regional, do we, is there a way to, or has the, has the committee compared Jamestown employment opportunities, how this looks against that?
Yeah, if you remember, we did the audit last year, we targeted a couple different positions in particular that were much lower than their peers, and we, and we did some equity adjustments to raise those positions up, paraprofessionals and custodians, and this is looking a little more globally at the group, not singling out any positions, we do feel like there's some that could use those equity adjustments when we have the ability to budget for that, but right now, this is just a global look, but we did make some pretty nice adjustments into the paraprofessionals and, and custodian positions last year.
Any other questions from the board at this point? Okay.
So it may be some direction if the board is, if does feel comfortable, if we'd like to delay this to, you know, we may have, I'm going to be recommending later that you might want to have a special board meeting at the end, at the, in the first week of June, or if you feel comfortable with enough information to act now, again, I wish I had sent this out a little bit earlier, but just a reminder, it was vetted through the Finance Committee.
And I apologize as well, I was thinking, we, we only have one meeting in June now coming up, and so that is a little bit later than, than I was thinking versus two weeks from now. If, if the board is willing, is interested in doing that, we could have a motion and a second to add a C under Finance.
I just had a-
Yep, go ahead, Melissa.
It's, it says that the scale and range is, do we know where, I mean, and I apologize if you said that and I just kind of missed it, like where most of that is going to be going, or how that breakdown is going to be?
The individual positions, you mean?
Yeah, I know.
Okay, like on this, on the wage schedule?
Yes.
Give me a second, and I can, I can make sure that you get that included in.
Okay.
I didn't include that in, into this. Kristy, if you could just-
Yeah, because we, we just changed the base cell, and then everything populates through the wage schedule, but, yeah, I can, we can put that in the drive.
So depending on the percentage of the box?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I guess just procedurally, what do we need to do to get something added to the agenda, and then, and then go from there?
A motion to add, under-
Yeah, Letter C would be under Finance, Support Staff.
I guess I'd like to move to add the Support Staff recommendation to the agenda.
There's a motion to add under Finance the Support Staff recommendation, is there a second? Second by Jamie? Any further discussion on that particular motion and second? Steve?
Two things, I guess, one, I would want to declare a conflict there, and then also, I guess, in terms of the motion, when something is made it through committee, I'm quite comfortable moving on that.
So we have a, since this is a new item, we started with conflicts of interest at the beginning, we have one conflict with this, as well as further comments, thank you. Any other questions, comments, discussion? So we have a motion, a second, to add the Support Staff recommendations, salary recommendations to the agenda under Finance, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Yeah, yeah, no, and now we can still have discussion on that, once we get to that, yeah, or, and we can have more discussion now, it's just, it's on the agenda, the only motion was to put it on the agenda, whether it's passed or not is, is another motion, and then we had Amy, we had one conflict on that one, so when we record your numbers, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that, moving on to mine, Facility Planning, yeah, we'll pull it up in that, now on Section C, or on Item C, yeah, and we'll, we'll pull it up on Item C, up on the screen, and I'll put it in your drive, just give us a second to organize. Facility Planning, that's something that'll come up in a later agenda topic, so I'll talk about that more there, but we do have Board Memo 116, you have an interesting, interesting situation occurring in, in Jamestown with the change of a few items in Century Code, we're, I think, the only district that's in this particular situation with, you know, a potential, we're far enough along in a facility plan that the, the change to only primary and general elections could impact us, that can't start until August 1st, so we're, I think, the only district in that middle ground area where if we chose to have a special election, we could actually do that before August 1st, so that's what Board Memo 116 discusses, and I'd like, when we get to that portion in the agenda, to have a little discussion in direction around how do we want to proceed with that, but that's for that agenda topic. In Levy Worksheet, I just want to walk through this with you a little bit, with changes to the 3% limit in, in levy requests has created a lot of discussion, this was, if you followed the legislature at all, the 3% discussion and how this all unfolded really happened towards the end of session, so as, once session ended and, and the implementation and implications of decisions were all fleshed out, this, I think, will be a, a good document for the board, but maybe also business managers and superintendents across the state to be able to utilize, because there are complexities, but what I wanted to share with you is just a couple different pages on this worksheet, not only for board members, but it could be for staff, for patrons to understand what, what the potential impact to taxation would be at the local level, but I'm just going to touch on a few things in tab to tab here. If you look at these spreadsheets, anything that's in blue, you could enter, the things that are in white are just going to pre-populate based on those other dollars, or those other calculations and formulas. On this page, there's nothing really of surprise, really, it includes taxable value from your previous year, that's this current year, the budgeted year, what would be next year, we're just projecting a 3% increase, that could be different, we, it's a little early in the process to know, but that's what we're assuming. The valuation of new district property, this is where things start to get a little bit confusing, because it depends on perspective and interpretation of the law, and in some interpretations, this valuation of new district property should be added to your previous year, and then the 3% comes on that amount, okay? In other interpretations, it's simply 3% of the dollars from your previous year, so we still need clarification on that, even though the bill's passed, there's two different schools of thoughts and interpretations, so we need to figure that out. This looks at, what I'll show you in the next tab shows you the more complex, so if it's simply 3% on dollars from last year, that's going to be easy to calculate, if you have to infuse the valuation of new district, new district property, that's going to get a little bit more confusing. The other, and I think this is more a planning tool for the board to understand, tuition in previous years, North Dakota Century Code outlines levies, and tuition levy is really vague, essentially what it says is you can, in grades seven through 12, school districts can levy for tuition or tutoring, that's all it says, grade seven through 12, tuition and tutoring, it doesn't give you a timeframe, doesn't, it just, doesn't give you any parameters outside of that. To me, the most defendable position for a school district to be in is not to speculate what you may spend, it's to look to the previous year to say, this is what we did spend, and use that amount to levy for. That, again, seems very defendable, rather than picking a number out of the air, you're saying, well, this is what we actually spent, then you're as accurate as you can be moving forward. So if you look at what we spent in tuition in this year, the key areas, of course, career and tech ed, what we spend in tuition for the J V C T C, district placement in grade seven through 12, what we play, what we pay for students placed in outside agencies or outside districts in grade seven through 12, is the 568 or approximate, and then the tuition we spent on center for distance ed, if you add that together and, and divide that by our taxable value, you would see a possible tuition levy of 14 mils, if you're familiar with our, our levy in the past, we've pretty consistently historically levied seven mils, so we're levying significantly less than we could, I'm not suggesting that we should levy 14 mils, I'm just giving you the range of what you could do, and what that maximum could be, I am not at all in favor of simply just raising levies and ask, you know, taking our hands out to the taxpayer and ask them for more, I'm just giving you an option to say, what would your maximum be in this particular scenario? So with that, I'm going to move into the next tab, again, you can see the blue cells here, this would be what we did levy on our certificate of levy, we levy in dollars, we don't levy in mils, so I think it's important that these worksheets focus on dollars and not, and not mils, the mils calculate, but we levy in dollars. So if you look at the 3% from the previous year, well, if we know what we levied last year, and we know what the valuation of new growth is, you know, we know what our maximum could be in terms of dollars, and that calculates into mils, okay? So you see that the only give that we're going to have in the future, other than, you know, general fund, the board discretionary, that's the 10, we levy between 60 and 70, so those 10 mils, those are all governed by the 3%, miscellaneous fund, it's governed by the 3%, Building Fund governed by the 3%, Special Reserve governed by the 3%, there's still questions about that, so what's 3% of zero is still zero, and so there's still, we still need state guidance on what happens if a school doesn't levy in the miscellaneous, or doesn't levy in the Special Reserve this year, does that mean they are in perpetuity at a 0%? Well, common sense would tell you no, but we need guidance on how that works, you know, if you levied it in the past, are you governed by zero, or is it initially when you do it? So that one is still a little bit up in the air, but, but special assessment, sinking in interest judgment can come into play if you pass a bond referendum, and tuition, those are all mils that are defined in Century Code, so you are not governed by the 3%, because it says exactly what you can spend those on, so those you actually can still increase. Maybe the most important part about this, this tab is this one right here, so if you remember when we looked at legislation in the past, we have in that limitation for 3%, if you increase, or if, because your valuation increases more than 3%, you can't levy 60 mils, if you remember from our state funding formula discussions in the past, and, and Board Education in the past, we know that we're going to be deducted the value of 60 mils, and so what the legislature did is they created what they call gap funding, meaning if you are pushed below 60 mils in your general fund, which we are in this scenario, the state will make up the difference, so 41, 41,000 plus in this example, plus this general fund allocation equates to 60 mils, that's essentially how that works, but this is the gap funding amount, so we would have to apply to the state, the state would send us this money sometime in January of that, of that tax year. There is not gap funding for any of these others that push us below what we targeted in the last year, but it, I'll draw your attention to this tab, which even in this scenario, you're asking for $312,000 more than you did in the year previous, that's the reason why we levy in dollars. It's easy to get lost in the, well, we levy 60 mils, we levy 10 mils, we levy 12 mils, well, we're still getting more dollars, so that's important to recognize, and I think it's an important part of this, this tool, the other is percentage change, and you might say, well, if we're limited to 3%, how can these levies increase beyond 3%? Well, it's the value of the new growth, so if that value of new growth is added to our previous year's taxable value, that is going to have to be greater than 3%, or if we increase to the tuition levy or the special assessment, that would have to increase more as well. More than anything, just a tool for you and for patrons to look at, we'll use it when we budget, we'll probably reference it at our budget hearings, so you can be familiar with it. What might be more interesting to board members, patrons, is the last tab, which is the property tax generator, so it uses the value of residential property, the value of commercial property, the value of cropland, of, of a cropland acre, and it would just project out what the previous year was, what the present year, the proposed year would be, and then the difference, so even if you wanted to look at that and suggest, well, what would happen if we increased and added a bond referendum that equated to X amount of dollars and X amount of mils, then you could do that and pretty easily generate what the tax impact would be, if you want to suggest, well, what would happen if we did actually levy towards that amount, that we can? So if we added that in 1.3 million, as an example, oh, that's a one extra zero there. So just as an example, say, say that was the choice the board made to say, well, we want to double that tuition levy, because that's what we actually spend in tuition, it's a little bit off from that, but you'd be able to see that that would make a fairly significant tax impact in all of those categories, so, again, it just really designed for awareness for you, planning for us. So again, it just really designed for awareness for you, planning for us. But we will reference this in the future as well, and we'll, I'm working with the director of finance at the Department of Public Instruction to get a little more clarity on some of these other topics as well. But back into my report. Really, the legislative updates, I included a presentation from NDCL and a handout on all of the different pieces of education legislation. If you have some time, if you haven't already, take a look through that. A lot of bills passed that impact educators this year. And if you really want to get the shakes, do the implementation checklist. That shows all of the different things that school administrators and teachers have to comply with in the next school year based on all of this legislation. It's a significant amount of implementation cost. There is a lot, not necessarily in terms of dollars cost, but there's a human capital cost to every one of these bills because teachers are going to have to do things differently, administrators are going to have to do things differently just to comply with the law in these various different changes that have come up. The last thing that I have before Stanford Questions is that Dollars for Scholars, just a wonderful organization that continues to support our high school seniors, a group that works really very hard. In the last, in the 12 years that I've been here, the Dollars for Scholars program has grown, the number of scholarships has approximately doubled as the annual award or the average award amount has doubled. So it went from $500 per scholarship and about 30 scholarships to now 57 scholarships at $1,000 minimum. And, you know, that equates to almost $60,000 in scholarships given to JHS seniors this year. So they've done a fantastic job. I greatly appreciate working on that board. But the people that we work with really care about our kids and care about continuing to grow these scholarships, you know, with the goal of being able to give a scholarship to every kid that applies. That, you talk about aspirational goals, that would be great if we can do that. But, and I would have to say that we are well on our way with the peoples that serve on that board, giving a lot of their time and energy to our Jamestown High School kids. So with that, I'd stand for questions.
Any questions? Melissa?
I just have a question on Dollars for Scholars. Is there a place you can go to get a list of all of the individual scholarships and those that have received it? We do have a presentation that was provided at the annual awards presentations. We can get that uploaded online. I don't think it is right now, but we can certainly share that. And I think Dollars for Scholars is planning to do a, you know, some kind of rollout to all of those award winners on social media as well.
Any other questions from the board? Okay. If not, moving on our agenda, we have nothing under old business, under new business and activities. A, approval of a cooperative agreement in boys tennis. Is there a motion? Motion by Dan. Second by Jason. A motion and second for approval of the cooperative agreement in boys tennis. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Number two, buildings and grounds, overview of facility planning, next steps. That's memo. Any questions on that at this time? Okay. Number three, curriculum assessment and instruction, nothing under that. Under finance, we have A and B, the general fund balance, and the monthly financials are both there for your information. And then we have letter C that's been added to the agenda, the support staff salary recommendations.
I would move to approve the proposed salary staff, sorry, support staff.
Support staff, yep. Recommendations. Is there a second? Second by Aaron. So a motion by Jason, second by Aaron, to, for approval of the provided support staff recommendations. And now we'll have discussion. Yep, Dr. Leck.
If I may. Melissa, I assume this is what you were looking for? So have our positions aligned to a lane? And we approve the lanes?
So it's a percent each increase on each lane? So that's why there's a range of dollar amounts?
Correct. So an individual would get a percentage increase on their cell, plus they would move a lane? You know, we think a lane's down in education, but a lane is there across?
I was kind of hoping that there was something more that had like, you know, paras.
We didn't break it down by the lane percentage?
Yeah.
Like a lane, like a pair educator would be in lane three, if you're asking specifically about paras. That's this lane. Yeah, I'm trying.
Yeah, there you go. Now is that better?
From a budgetary standpoint, yes.
Okay. And then where would like custodian staff be in that same?
Nope.
Same lane custodian, head custodian is lane five?
That would be elementary.
Like an elementary custodian?
It's middle school, high school?
Lane six is the element, or the middle school and the high school because they take on different responsibilities with maintenance.
Okay. And then assuming lane eight is like office staff?
That's after-school site coordinator, superintendent administrative assistant. That's eight.
And then what's lane nine?
Nine is district assistant maintenance, and then line, lane 10 is the district maintenance director.
Yep. Aaron, go ahead.
Yeah, and I remember last year, we did do some lane adjustments for certain positions as well.
Yep. That was par and custodian. Yep. Par and custodian, that was the equity adjustment I referenced earlier. We changed the lanes for those positions last year. Correct. So I think we have made great strides on our support staff schedule, but the reason that those percentages are just a little bit higher is there's still a little bit more work to do. You know, a higher percentage on a lower hourly wage, and that makes sense.
Yeah. Especially starting at 60. There's a reason we do not have paras.
And one of the benefits that we can have, you know, look to provide is also in the childcare area, you know, where we can really drive down that cost for childcare for those, and that is a particular position that we believe would have opportunity and really see some value from, that program.
And the finance committee did spend quite a bit of time going through, Stacy presented all of the options and in just different ways to do it, and this kind of landed on this middle ground area, but not wanting to lose ground either. And so that's why we're, where we're at. And the overall cost of the district is 130 some thousand, 138, 138,000 is the increase.
Any other questions? Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the recommendations that came from the finance committee for the support staff wage increases for the next year. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Chris, let's probably do a roll call.
Can I probably exclude him?
Yep. Yep. Okay. Heidi Larson?
Yes.
Jason Rohr?
Yes.
Jacob Meyer?
Yes.
Dan Tweetin?
Yes.
Aaron Roberts?
Yes.
Melissa Gleason?
No, because I would like to see the paras.
Okay. Owen McKenna?
Yes.
And Jamie Bear?
Yes.
Seven to zero. It's six to one. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Yep. Six to one. Yep. Conflict. Yes. Yep. 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 Six to one. Yep. And Melissa, I appreciate your comments on, in case we didn't hear your, your concern was you would like a higher salary increase for the paraprofessional positions, concerned about filling those positions, and that will be definitely noted by the finance committee as well as the board. So just, all right. So that motion did get approved. Moving into operations, we have A, approval of the athletic training agreement with JRMC. Is there a motion? Motion by Jason.
I would move to approve the athletic trainer agreement.
Is there a second? Second by Melissa. We have motion and second for approval of the athletic trainer agreement with JRMC. Dr. Leck, would you just make a comment on what a great benefit this is for the school district?
Yeah. The, we've had a partnership with JRMC for a number of years. They provide an athletic trainer at no cost to the district, so this is a zero-cost agreement. We had conversations with JRMC a number of years, looked at what options were out there. They have done just an amazing job supporting our kids and supporting our programs, and for them to provide this to our district at no cost is really, you know, a wonderful benefit and shows the kind of partner that JRMC is. And we just appreciate the work that they do, like I said, not just for our programs, but mostly for our kids, coaches.
Thank you, Dr. Leck. Any questions or discussion? Any discussion? We have a motion and a second for approval of the athletic trainer agreement with JRMC. If not, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Under personnel, approval to post temporary inventory coordinator. If you remember, Aaron mentioned this, this is a recommendation coming from the finance committee to inventory the items that are in Washington School as a school is retired. Is there a motion? Motion by Steve?
Second.
Second by Dan. We have motion and second for approval to post the temporary inventory coordinator. And the information is there? Any discussion? Any discussion? Yep, Melissa?
How temporary are you thinking this position would be?
I would love to be able to answer that question with, but we just don't know. We've never retired or closed a building. There's a lot of inventory that we need to consider. We are hoping that it would be the summer, but, you know, there's lots of decisions that need to be made. And the inventory at Washington is one piece, but we also, I think, need to start to consider if we're going to do that in asset distribution or sale of assets. We have a lot of assets in this building that we might want to consider how that translates at a bigger level. So at the very least, I would say the summer.
Any other questions or discussion? So we have a motion and a second for approval to post the temporary inventory coordinator. If no further discussions, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion approved. B, approval of resignation at the conclusion of the 2024 to 2025 school year. Number one, Haley Alteringer. Number two, Bradley Stangland. Is there a motion? Motion by Aaron. Second by Dan. We have motion and second for approval of resignation at the conclusion of the 2024 to 2025 school year. Number one, Haley Alteringer. Number two, Bradley Stangland. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion approved. B, approval of resignation at the conclusion of the 2024 to 2025 school year. Number one, Haley Alteringer. Number two, Bradley Stangland. Is there a motion? Motion by Aaron. Second by Dan. We have motion and second for approval of resignation at the conclusion of the 2024 to 2025 school year. Number one, Haley Alteringer. Number two, Bradley Stangland. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion approved, and thank you for your service to our district. Number seven, policy and procedures. How does the board feel about doing this all in one motion? Good, seeing some nods. Okay. Approval policies, first reading of ABCB sportsmanship. Number two, amended FAB school assignment and choice. Number three, amended FBA student fees. Number four, amended FCAA. Just those three? Okay, that one's off there. Okay. So we have one, two, and three. Is there a motion? Motion by Jamie.
Second.
Second by Jason. We have a motion and second for approval of policies A, B, C, B, amended FAB, and amended FBA. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Under tuition, A, approval of tuition agreements for number one Montpelier, two Montpelier, and number three Jamestown. Is there a motion? Motion by Melissa. Is there a second? Second by Aaron. We have motion and second for approval of tuition agreements, number one Montpelier, two Montpelier, and three Jamestown. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion approved. We have nothing under other items for future agenda. Are there any items for future agenda? At any time, please email Dr. Leck or myself or contact us. We have a few board announcements and future meetings, so bear with me. Teacher negotiations meeting on Monday, May 20, 2025 at 4:30 PM in Thompson Community Room at the middle school. Administrator negotiations meeting on Thursday, May 22, 2025 at 4:30 PM in the district office conference room. JPS high school graduation on Sunday, May 25, 2025 at 2:30 PM in James Town Civic Center. Teacher negotiation meeting on Wednesday, May 28, 2025 at 4:30 PM in the Thompson Community Room at the middle school. Teacher negotiation meeting on Wednesday, June 4, 2025 at 4:30 PM in the Thompson Community Room at the middle school. Administrator negotiation meeting on Thursday, June 5, 2025 at 4:30 PM in the district office conference room. Health insurance meeting, this may not, this is a tentative meeting if needed, Friday, June 13 at noon in the district office conference room. And school board meeting on Monday, June 16 at 5:30 PM, the Thompson Community Room. Okay. We'll come back to that. Okay. So those are all of the meetings. Is there strategic planning meetings coming? We just?
This week, Thursday.
This week, Thursday at 5:30 PM. Okay, I thought that. So are there any other committee meetings that we missed? Okay. Also with, with the agenda item, adding item, we kind of did also move through, there was a memo of the overview of facility planning next steps that was there for information. We should maybe have a little discussion on that at this time. Aaron, go ahead.
Yeah, so I think the survey result, the survey is due May 26. There's a decision date on, is it June 5?
Right-ish. So if I could provide a little context, you know, I started earlier in the superintendent report and said we, we're kind of in this murky middle ground. A couple of bills changed some deadlines for holding a referendum election. We're probably the only district far enough along in plannings, and we've been very deliberate about planning and communicating, which has led us to this place where if the board decides to move forward and issue out a resolution for a referendum, you have really two options. One, you can expedite a decision and hold that referendum before August 1, or if you wait until after August 1, and all of the timelines that would come with those, with these law changes, you would have to wait until the next primary election or the next general election. It'll no longer be the case where school boards can come out and say, we want to hold an election on Tuesday, October 7, or whatever the date is. It can only be done after August 1. That can only be done at a primary or a general election. Like I said, the district is in, because of all the planning that we've done, we are at a place where we could hold an election before August 1 and have the information we need to give to the public, have the results of a survey would guide you in terms of where's the, what's the pulse of the community. But to do that and meet all of the timelines, and I did explain that in the overview, it gets a little wordy with the different bills in Century Code references, but really what it means is if you hold an election, or if you call for an election at the, in the first week of June, you can have a special election before August 1. If you don't, you have to wait until June of 2026. And so I need a little bit of guidance from the board in terms of, now, we don't have And so I need a little bit of guidance from the board in terms of, now, we don't have the survey results yet, we won't have them till May 26th, but we have time between hearing the, hearing those results after May 26th and June 4th or 5th, that would give us the time to really analyze those results, see where we're at, and still have an election the Tuesday before August 1st. So I put the dates in here, I'm not looking at them now, but June, if we hold a meeting as late as June 5th, we could have a special election on July 29th. I talked with legal counsel, they feel like all of the deadlines, we can meet all of those, but what I need to start working on is an initial resolution, and in my mind, you'd need two, because you put two options out to the public. So I'd need to work with bond counsel to draft two resolutions, and I'd have to prep the board on the steps that you need to take on that June 5th meeting. And I, we would have to have that timeline broken down, because we don't have wiggle room. You know, it is a hard stop on August 1st. After August 1st, you won't be having a special election. But that's if the board chooses, that's if the community's feedback says, gives you the guidance that you want to move forward, but that would have to happen probably no later than June 5th. So if you would like to schedule a board meeting, a special meeting for June 5th, then you would give me the guidance that I need to do the work with bond counsel and ICON to make sure that we follow all the steps to do that.
Jason.
So when the survey results are complete, the results, what's, what's that going to look like for us to see the results? Are we just going to get numbers, percentages, or are we going to get comments we hear?
Yeah. School perceptions will come and provide that feedback to you and disaggregate it out. Right now, we're still below, I sent an email out to, to the community through social media. You know, we were, we're below what their average return rate is, their response rate is around 18%. Right now, I just checked this morning, we're around 6%. So we're still below what that number is, but in my conversations with other districts, their feedback has been, once, you, you kind of reach critical mass with a couple hundred, and you're, you know, your, your standard deviation, it, it doesn't really change that much. You, you get, once you get to 400, what you, your results at 800 track pretty close to what they were at 400. When you get to 1,200, 1,600, 2,000, they track pretty close to that. But the results that I've seen preliminarily put us right about at that 60%. So you'd like to have a little more definitive response one way or the other. I, I'm guessing what you're going to see is there's about 60% in favor when we get to those results on May 26th, and that is right at the, we need the 60% approval rating to pass a referendum. So you're right, you're going to be right at that. So I would anticipate, what I would see that meaning is a 60% on that survey, if, with their standard deviation, probably puts you somewhere between 56% and 64% approval rating on a, on a special election. If that holds true.
Owen.
How does, so are we going to get any interpretation from school perceptions on selection bias and?
I believe so.
Who's going to, who's more inclined to take the survey, the no's or the yeses?
Yep. I would anticipate when, when they provide that, and I have not worked with them and seen their presentation, but I would anticipate that you would, you would, they would describe their methodology and how they're coming to the results and what they're seeing historically from schools. I'm guessing they're going to share that we have a pretty low response rate, and so there's a lot more variability there, and, you know, so, so they're, you know, not going to feel as comfortable with sharing what their anticipated projection would be.
And then also, you said you were talking to other districts. I know usually referendums only happen once in a while, but is there any sense to timing of a special election and how that affects who shows up to the polls?
It certainly does. Historically, special elections have seen a higher success rate than those that are on a primary or a general, because the people that are coming out for special elections are coming out purposefully to vote on that election. They've, they've educated themselves, they are well-versed in what the pros or cons of that proposal would be. Those that are coming to the primary may not have been as educated on that topic. So historically, I would say special elections have had a higher success rate.
Refresh my memory, the last two referendums we did, one was during the general and one was a special, or were they both during a general?
Primary and a special.
Jason.
So you just need direction or specific, or you request?
Well, i- if the board sets a special meeting for June 5th, then I, my intention for that meeting would be to prepare resolutions in the event that the board makes the decision to move forward with a, with a referendum.
So right now, we're just deciding if we want to meet on the day?
Yes.
Basically?
Yep.
With not, at least to review the survey?
Correct. Yep.
I have no problem.
Essentially, I need time to plan. If the board is not looking to have a meeting on June 5th, that means you're waiting until June 20, 26th to have a, to even consider a special election, or to consider a referendum.
So June 5th is a Thursday, and were we thinking a noon meeting? There is administrator negotiations from 4:30 to 5:30. So noon?
Whatever works.
Yeah. Yes. Steve?
Did you say we have to declare on the 5th? Do we need a meeting before then, actually?
You'd need to pass an initial resolution at that meeting to work through the different deadlines. Century code says 20 days, but you can't do 20 days. You have other, there's other legal conflicts that you just can't feasibly do 20 days. The, the fewest amount of days would be in the 50 to 60 range.
What's, what's the cost of a special election?
I'm not sure. Off the top of my head, I'd have to research that.
And would we have to do it? Would we have to do it? Yep, and we, we wouldn't be, have to run the special election.
I guess just with, you know, the timing and how close everything is, I think we should plan to meet, however, I think a lot of it's just going to be dependent on that survey and, but we just don't know yet, so, but I think we got, we should run through that due diligence to be prepared in the case that the survey is convincing one way or the other.
Set a special meeting, you don't have a special meeting?
Yeah. We don't need a motion for a special meeting, I can call that, right? Yeah. So, yeah, we would, so we'd be looking at probably 5:30 on June 5th. Is that going to give enough time? Okay. So if there's a motion and a second to set that meeting? Jason?
I would move that we set a special meeting for June 5th at 5:30 in this room to discuss survey results and potential referendum proposals.
Okay. So we have a motion? Second by Aaron. Motion by Jason, second by Aaron. Any discussion? And you'll send out a calendar invite to get that on our calendars and put it on the district calendar as well. Any other discussion? If not, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion approved. Okay. Thank you for that discussion, and we will meet on the 5th and see where we're at at that time and, and the different options to, moving forward. Back under our regular agenda, we had all the board announcements and future meetings, including the strategic planning meeting was added to that as well. Our next agenda item is possible executive session to discuss negotiation strategies.
Let's see if I can get this right this time. I believe that discussion with our negotiations and developing a strategy relative to the school board's petition in this matter in open session would have an adverse fiscal effect on negotiations position of the board. Therefore, I move that the board enter into executive session and the following members and negotiators be identified as being present. School board members Jamie Bear, Melissa Gleason, Heidi Larson, Owen McKenna, Jason Rohr, Dan Tweetin, and Steve Veltkamp, and then Superintendent Rob Leck, and Adam Gaylor, and Business Manager Christie Grounds, and that the date and time are Monday, the 19th of May at 7:10 PM, and that the following topic will be considered, only the following topic will be considered in executive session, negotiation strategies, and that the legal authority for the executive session is section 44-04-19.1 of the North Dakota Century Code, and that the executive session be recorded.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Second by Melissa. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried. Note that following executive session, we will return to finish up our agenda and close the meeting.
This meeting was a mess.